Called all the meeting of Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, July 25, 2023, in the Boardroom of Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook Lane, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:31 PM. Board member present, Ms. Melinda Sullivan, Ms. Crystal D'Alola, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, and myself, Marshall Kendrick-Powell, will be here shortly. Board members absent, Ms. Vicki Morgan and Mr. Casey Phelan and Powell until she gets here. As the record indicated, the board members present, this meeting is duly called and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Invitational agreement by Mrs. Sullivan, the pledges by Mrs. D'Alola. Miss D'Alola.
Would you please bow with me? Our most gracious heavenly father, we thank thee for the many blessings of this day. We thank you for our district. We ask that you would lead and guide and direct us as we prepare for the coming year. We ask that you would be with each one of our personnel as they prepare for this coming year. Be with the leaders of our country, the armed forces, and those who protect us. Lead and guide and direct us. We pray a special blessing for Vicki. Keep us ever near to thee. These things we ask and honor. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
At this time, we will hear public comments from Mr. Christopher Rivera regarding budget workshop.
Mr. Todd.
Kenny, can you do three minutes?
You have three minutes, and he'll give you one when you're getting close.
Great. Thank you so much. Well, thank you again for your time. My name is Christopher Rivera, and I work with the Texas Right Project. I'm also a concerned family member. I have a niece and nephew that are K through 12, and I would like to speak about the 2023-2024 PISD budget. Reviewing this year's budget, I noticed almost every department received a 1% decrease in funding. Some programs like counseling, student services, guidance center, and the college readiness have steadily declined over the last couple of years. College readiness funding was cut by 32% for fiscal year 2021 through 2022. This year, it's going to be cut an additional 1%, well, for 2023. And in regards to counselors, the ratio for students to counselors at PISD is one counselor for every 411 students. So there is no general funding going towards extra or extended day programs or summer school. These two programs have received budget cuts since 2020 and are receiving $10 from the general funding this year. I understand that the school board is facing a deficit, but I'm also concerned that we are cutting costs for educational and extracurricular programs in order to increase funding for PISD's police department. The funding for this year for the police went up by 62%, amounting to $1.2 million. I would like to see some of that funding go to athletics, robotics, counselors, social workers, fine arts, day programs, after-school programs, summer programs. These kind of programs keep our students safe and engaged and really build a sense of community, but if we continue investing in policing and over-surveillance and things like this, we're only investing in criminalizing our students over educating them. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you for your comments. In the budget this year, there is $3 million for summer school and half a million for extended day. Those were previously in the previous budgets paid by ESER or federal funds. We've increased counseling each and every year with a $5-plus-million grant. This year, we're going to increase crisis counselors for the first time ever in the district, so we're super excited about that. But as far as all of the funding that you've talked about, it's either been because of state funding issues. I'm sure you're quite aware of what we're waiting on, and hopefully in the third special session, they will actually do something and step up and fund public schools the way they should be. But we're trying to make sure that campuses don't take all of that burden of cutting funding, but departments do as well. But I can assure you, our services will be better than they have been in past years as we continue to look for creative ways to fund these programs. But thank you very much for your comments.
Great. Thank you so much.
Next item on the agenda, budget workshop. Mr. Poppy.
So I'm going to say a few words as he comes up, if that's okay, Mr. Poppy. As you can remember, board members, we've seen this many, many times. As we started, we had ask every department their needs and what they needed for the coming school year. And as you can imagine, we have big hearts and big goals for our students and our staff, so we had about a $30 million deficit budget, which we knew we could not feasibly bring forward to you. So we started immediately prioritizing where we needed to add additional funds, where grants perhaps weren't filling in the gap, or federal funds were not taking responsibility for some costs or programs that we had. So last month, you know you voted as a board to perhaps look at removing the local optional homestead exemption of 10% since the state was going to give such a greater homestead exemption cut. In other words, it was going to be increased from $40,000 to $100,000, and we knew that that money would be used for our students and our staff as well as competitive teacher pay. You made that vote, and then we heard that there was a bill in response to your actions of taking care of students and staff. And so we've got to look at two budgets tonight, one with the local optional homestead exemption removal and one without, because we don't know where that's going to head. So we've updated our budget to two versions, one with and one without, so you're going to see both of those there in front of you. And I think Mr. Poppy's going to just expand on that a little more. The next step, as we all know, to finalize the budget process is to, of course, look at the final expenditures, revenue, and then vote on that in August, as well as set our tax rate in August as well. So we will not know until the third special session, as I was just explaining, what funding there is. I mean, when you talk about police requirements alone, we have to, by law, have an armed officer at every campus, but they only increased the funding from $9.72 to $10 per student. That's pennies. And they gave us $15,000 per campus. Again, pennies on the dollar when you talk about the requirements that are being put in place and what we're being asked to do. We have, in every teacher's ownership, a way to immediately alert us of any crisis in their classroom through their device, whether that's their laptop, computer, or phone. This week, we were told that's not sufficient. We have to have a physical button on the wall. That's going to cost millions of dollars as well, and that's not funding that we're being told we're going to be given. So those are just a few examples. We're, of course, working on the fencing and all the other things that we want to put in place. But again, those are state requirements that we're going to have to eventually have conversations about, whether that comes from the grant that we receive, because, again, our grant department is amazing, has gone out and looked for creative additional funding ways, or whether that comes from the local budget. So we will, again, bring you the final budget in August, hopefully hear more about special session three. We've been told it could be as late as October, which is way past your deadline to approve a budget. But their following key dates are very important. By August 31, this budget does have to be approved and posted to our website, and then, of course, our tax rate has to be adopted by no later than September 30, or 60 days after receiving the certified appraised tax roll. So I'm going to bring Mr. Poppy up. He's going to say just a few more things and then take any questions that you may have, so we can review this with you.
All right. Well, good evening, Vice President Kendrick, Board Trustees, Superintendent Powell. Dr. Powell covered a lot of it. I just want to point out the ESER funds do expire in September of 2024, so we have about 14 more months of the federal dollars. So we did move summer school, about $3 million, into the local operating budget out of the ESER funds, and then we'll continue to move things out of the ESER funds into the general operating fund for '24, '25. So if you do look at the two different budgets, you'll see on the top left, it says LOHE. That's Local Option Homestead Exemption Removal, and that has a budget deficit of a little bit over $3.9 million. And then the other one is stapled, and that is with the local option homestead exemption at 10%, and that's a $10.9 million budget deficit. So some big-ticket items that we captured in the budget, the way the market is and with inflation, property insurance, $4 million. Transportation costs for pairs of buses continues to go up with inflation, a little bit over $1.8 million. And then the teacher incentive allotment that we're moving forward with has some additional costs this upcoming year that was added to the budget. And as Dr. Powell said, we will bring the budget next month in August, and we will see what special session number three has in store for us. So pending any questions.
On the second page, I was just going to highlight, those are some things that have already been board-approved, like the teacher raises at 3%. You approved that on June 13, so you can see the dates there where some of the additional positions that were needed, whether they were federally funded or locally funded, as well as some of the reclassifications and reorganizations. So we've tried to put dates there just to keep you informed on when those items were brought forward, and then we're ready for any questions that you may have.
Well, it's interesting that class of bill, the call of our vote. I mean, that's something we voluntarily did. It's community-funded. It's community-controlled, and we're taking it back because of the huge jump in property tax reductions. And like you say, the reason we did it, we wanted to put the $9.5 million back in our budget, take care of kids. We don't know how that's going to play out, but to me, that's still the right thing to do. We just have to wait and see what they're going to do. That's kind of getting involved in local control as far as I'm concerned.
And so the only thing different next month that we bring will be a shift in revenue. We'll decrease what we collect with the property tax relief. We'll decrease the local revenue, and we'll shift it over to the state revenue when we adopt in August, as compression's part of the property tax relief as well.
You come up with the unfunded mandates first off. Now they're telling us, they're giving us an ultimatum, basically, to either leave it there and do what we need to do for the right thing for this district, or, again, put our hand out expecting them to come back and give us money. Oh, thanks, thanks, thanks. But no, it's $9 million today. What about next year? What about the next year? Because that compounding will really eat us up in the next couple of years, and we're stuck.
I agree.
It's the same thing, Kenny. We've been seeing for years, unfunded mandate after unfunded mandate, this buzzer on the wall now. They're not paying for it. It's unfunded.
Absolutely.
And it's just a crazy situation. Where do they think the money comes from? This is a situation we're all faced with, but it's unfunded mandates. And we have to suck in and take care of it best where we can, and if we run our budget, then we have to cut things, take care of the unfunded mandates, which is not helping our kids at all.
Well, it's too much, too much authority from the top and taking away, like you said, from the local government, local authorities.
And it's so unusual that after we passed it, the very next day, one of the representatives had a strong write-up about it. It's just not fair.
Well, the Senate bill went right with it, right?
So it did, and it was not done in an open session. It was done at a desk. But Bettencourt is who you're talking about, and that article, it was interesting to look at his area that he actually represents. 80% of his districts do not have a local optional homestead exemption.
Right. But he didn't want us to take advantage of it.
If some voluntary you give, you can voluntarily take it back, but they want to get in the middle of it, so.
And gave for over 30 years.
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, the trend that we're seeing statewide is more and more districts are adopting a budget deficit.
Well, I'm sure they are.
And districts that have never adopted a budget deficit.
You know, you look at the safety situation by itself. That'll put a lot of districts in deficit before they ever turn a corner. And we don't know about salaries or help with teachers and things like that. October's a good date, isn't it? Wonderful. You've got $5 billion on there. He's holding hostage, and that's a sad thing.
And so by law, we have to pass our budget by the 31st of August, but they're not going to make a decision about what funds we're going to get until they're ready. It may not even be in October.
Until the teachers are back in school, in the classrooms, and they can go up and march and speak their voice.
Right.
Well, even with all that, we appreciate the board and the approval of the 3% salary increase in the pay raises, even though the state is not adequately funding Texas school districts.
Well, you've got to take care of your people.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Policy update presentation by Mrs. Jody.
Good evening, Mr. Kendrick, board members, Dr. Powell. I'm bringing tonight, well, we're talking about two different TASB-initiated local policy updates, 120 and 121. You'll note both of those are fairly small updates for local policies. Most of the changes that are outlined in those two updates tonight focus on small things based on regulatory changes, whether that was to administrative regulations from TEA or edits and changes to GASP and their standards, or just different little pieces like that. There's also some clarification in there and just some reorganization of, you know, making sure that our language and policy about police officers and safety and security personnel is in the appropriate spot, right? Or that we're clarifying our complaint processes and what applies to what. If you guys have any questions about either of those updates, then please feel free to ask those, and we could focus on a specific policy. But yes, ma'am, Ms. Sullivan.
This didn't make any big changes to any of the policy and procedures for our district, did it?
Not really that I've seen. I don't think that there's going to be really major changes that come out of this. Most of this is just really either things that are legally promulgated, like, for example, there's some stuff in here about restraint and just some clarification on, you know, what kinds of restraint that can be used, or clarification that our FNG policies apply to the instructional materials complaint processes and things of that nature, right? It's more clarification in ensuring that our policies are matching our practices and that that is matching what's required by regulation and law. But as far as substantive changes to practices, I'm not seeing a lot of that in these two.
Thank you.
We'll see more of that with probably the next TASB-initiated update, because it'll be the post-legislative one. Yes?
I have a question on the superintendent, or the designate. We're taking away that.
What page are you on?
Page 44 in this book.
Is it 120 or 121?
It's 121.
Okay.
Says the superintendent shall ensure that detailed specifications are prepared for any construction project for which competitive bids are sought.
Right, so that's going straight through you and not going to be?
Kevin. Because normally Kevin would be my designate in that case, so I'm assuming this is required.
Well, and so there's not, so it is required, but part of the reason, if you'll go back to the explanatory notes for CVA, and I believe that it talks about part of the reason that they're taking away some of that designate, is that the superintendent has leeway, right, with how she ensures that that occurs. And so if you look at CVA, it says it authorizes, the local policy authorizes the superintendent to delegate responsibilities, and so it's not necessarily required for us to have a reference to or designate in that policy. So really, it's not necessary words, and we're trying to streamline this stuff and take stuff like that out is why that particular edit's recommended.
Okay. But at some point, we have designated that she will, you know, have.
Yeah, she has the authority to ensure, right, that those things are set, and how she goes about ensuring that can be through use of Kevin or through use of her other staff members. It doesn't mean that it's specifically something she has to do. That's why they're taking out that or-designee language, is just, once you've given that superintendent the authority to ensure those things happen, how she goes about ensuring that happens really is kind of within her management role. And unless we're specifying in policy like a particular title, so the superintendent or the Associate Superintendent of Human Resources, right, then there's not, it's not really necessary to say or-designee in a lot of places.
Thank you.
This is Jody's last policy session, so last chance.
Anything that you'd need to advise us, Mr. Jody?
We didn't say it was open-mic night, Ms. Sullivan.
You know, there's a lot of stuff that's coming out of the legislative session that you'll get to see, and you'll see a lot of it in your next policy update, because there'll be a lot of policy changes and that it promulgates both on the legal and the local side. So, you know, I don't have anything specific tonight with respect to these two that I think that we need to highlight, but if there's certainly any other questions or concerns, then let me know, and we can talk through those.
We thank you for all you've done for us and the way you've represented our district, our board and everybody else, and for your friendship. Wish you all the luck in the world.
Thank you. It's been an absolute pleasure. I've enjoyed my time in Pasadena, and the decision to pursue other opportunities has not made lightly at all.
Don't tear up.
I know, I'm trying not to.
We're going to miss you.
I've enjoyed, I've loved it, every minute of it.
You will be missed, Jody.
Thank you.
We feel like you kind of grew up with us.
I feel like I did. I feel like I did.
Well, she's a good lumberjack and all that stuff. Right suit.
That's right. Yep. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me get my agenda back over here. We're now going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, perp's considering the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee or due complaints or charges against a public officer or employee, unless the individual who is the subject of the deliberation or hearing requests a public hearing concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendation to higher administrative personnel and/or the superintendent's recommendation related to renewals, non-renewals, and termination of contracts for professional personnel. 551.071, to consult with the district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act, to seek advice of its attorneys about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing a purchase, exchange lease, or value of real property, we will reconvene in open session at 7 o'clock. We're going to reconvene in open session at 7 PM. There are no public comments tonight. Consent agenda? Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
With Ms. Sullivan, second with Mr. Fernandez. Any comments or questions? Hold in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion passes. Personnel section, consideration of possible approval of administrative personnel. Ms. Sullivan?
Mr. President, I move that we approve Administrative Personnel Section A through G.
Second?
Second, Ms. Fernandez. Hold in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion passes.
I'd like to read the names of those that have been approved for administrative positions. Evelyn Alvarez.
Hi.
Welcome to Pasadena ISD.
Good evening. Thank you so much for this great opportunity to become part of the Pasadena ISD. My family and I are very grateful. Thank you so much.
Good to have you.
Ms. Alvarez has been approved for the position of Educational Diagnostician for the Special Education Department for the '23-'24 school year, and we're glad that you're excited to be here. We're excited to have you. Would you like to introduce your family?
I brought my son, Louis, and my oldest son, his wife, and so we couldn't make it.
Very good.
The three of us are very grateful, once again, for this great opportunity. We're blessed to be here, and we're ready to do the best we can.
Well, welcome to Pasadena. You're new to our district, and so you're going to be meeting a lot of people in the next few days. Nancy Macias. Welcome to Pasadena. Ms. Macias has been approved for the position of Nutrition Services Operations for the '23-'24 school year. And do you have family with you?
I have my person, so Macias, Sean Macias, and my daughter is going to be here. She's taken care of her nutrition, but is happy that I have a separate position here in Pasadena ISD, and we're happy to move forward and start with her.
Well, welcome to Pasadena, and we're glad that you brought your crew with you.
Congratulations.
Ritsa Oliveras.
Yes, she is.
Welcome to Pasadena.
Thank you.
You're new to our district. We're delighted to have you, and you've been approved for the position of Educational Diagnostician for the Special Education Department. And I believe you probably have family with you tonight. Would you introduce them, please?
My husband, Zodigo, my dad, Roberto, my mother, Anna, and my brother, Roberto. My sister couldn't make it, just couldn't shut it work.
Fantastic.
We're delighted to have you in Pasadena.
And thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm excited to start this career and be a service to students at Pasadena ISD.
Well, we're excited to have you in Pasadena. Vanessa Ortiz. Welcome back, Vanessa. Ms. Ortiz has been approved for the position of Educational Diagnostician for the Special Education Department for the '23-'24 school year. And do you have family with you tonight?
Yes, I have.
Would you introduce them, please?
My husband, Jose Ortiz.
Great. And we're glad to have you back. Did you miss us?
Right.
Well, thanks for coming back. Leslie Ramos. Congratulations, Ms. Ramos. You've been approved for the position of Social Worker for the Special Programs Department for the '23-'24 school year. And you know a little bit about our district because you've been here before in another role, but you're new to our district as an employee of the district, so we're delighted to have you.
Thank you, and I'm excited to continue serving the students and families of Pasadena, and as well, I want to thank y'all for allowing me to take this position.
We're delighted to have you, and for those of you that don't know, Ms. Ramos was with communities and schools before, so she had the opportunity to be in our district. And do you have family with you?
Yes, I have my husband and my youngest.
Great. And you're going to have a whole lot of family once you get started. Thank you so much. Juan Wilson. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're new to Pasadena, and we're delighted to have you with us. You've been approved for the position of Educational Diagnostician for the Special Education Department for the '23-'24 school year, and we're delighted to have you.
Thank you for the opportunity to join Pasadena ISD. I would love to have a great, awesome career here while I'm working.
And we're excited, too. And do you have family?
Yes.
Would you introduce them to us?
Okay, I have my son, Malik. I have my brother Charles and his daughter, my sister, Jeline, my best friend, Kim, and my best coworker, Sherry Banks and her husband.
Congratulations to you, and you're going to meet a whole lot of people once school gets started. Thank you. Mr. Mikey Eskamita. Eskamita.
Hi, Mikey, again.
She's one, he's one of us. He's been approved for the position of Executive Director of Human Resources for the 2023-24 school year. Congratulations. We're excited for you.
And I am thrilled to be given this opportunity to serve the district.
Great. And do you have family with you tonight?
I do, yes.
Would you please introduce them?
So with me this afternoon, this evening, is my wife, Marissa, my daughter, Olivia, and my son, Evan.
Great. Congratulations. We're excited for you. Is there anyone here who was expecting your name to be called?
Fantastic. Welcome to all of you, and congratulations.
Congratulations to each and every one of you.
Consideration, well, let me say this before I go further. We've had all this, and you people want to stay for our meeting, you're certainly welcome to. If you came because of family and promotions or new hires or new responsibilities, you certainly may leave if you would like, or you can stay for our meeting, whichever you prefer. Thank you.
We'll give you a few minutes to clear out.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Go enjoy dinner on your family.
They sure seem glad to come back, don't they?
Yes. Uh, gentlemen, is this a French bar?
What is it? Next item on the agenda, consideration of possible approval of changes to the medical package for the plan of year 2024.
So moved.
First, maybe by Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any comments or questions?
So, board members, as you know, we have a district-wide insurance committee. We also have representatives from Gallagher here if you have questions. Matthew Monsivis and Derek H.O., I hope I'm saying that correct. Did I get close? Okay, a little bit. I got a little bit. Okay. I'm gonna work on that. They're both here as well, but our committee was in agreement to increase premiums by 10% across the board. After discussing with the fact that y'all went out on a limb and gave a 3% raise to all employees, we felt like it was in the best interest to not raise premiums across the board, so we looked at only that 10% increase being applied to Plan Two, as you know, cost the district significantly, and Plan Four, leaving Plan Three and Plan Five untouched, where their premiums will be the exact same as they were last year, as well as their deductibles would be going down by $500, as you can see there. So those were decreases to Plan Three, which is your Kelsey Care Plan, and Plan Five, which is your Memorial Hermann Plan. So I just wanted to highlight those changes on there. We did give you that one-page comparison. You always ask about TRS Active Care, which many districts are trying to go away from. We are self-funded, and we know that even though you look at those costs for employees, you also have to look at it for employees and spouse, employees and children. So we tried to do our side-by-side comparison. It's not always apples to apples, because they don't have the exact same services that we provide our employees, but we tried to do the best we could, Bonnie and working with Gallagher, to do a side-by-side comparison. So I just want to make sure you had that information in front of you. The green is kind of what it costs us, as far as per employee in relation to expenses that we're paying out for the plan.
Thank you. Any questions?
I have a question. Are we still utilizing the clinic to the fullest extent?
Absolutely. I don't know if anybody wants to come up. Bonnie's shaking her head yes, but we use the clinic above and beyond. We don't just have Dr. Hurtado there, but we have, correct me if I'm wrong, assistants there that are physician assistants, correct? And it's utilized to its capacity.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion passes. Thank you for the explanation. We have certified personnel for 2022-23 year, for information only, as well as support personnel. Educational section, consideration and possible approval of interlocal agreement between the city of Pasadena ISD and Harris County Community Youth Service to provide a youth service specialist for the summit. The total cost of services, $42,088, is included in the 23-24 budget for the summit.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Davila, second. Any comments or questions?
I have a question. So the obligation, I see the obligation PISD into Harris County. This is a PISD employee or a Harris County employee?
So I'm not sure of Mr. DeWolf. This is an ongoing program that we've had success with at the summit, and as the principal, he has asked for this to be included in his budget. This is not a PISD employee, is my understanding, but a definite, a constant there at the campus.
That's correct, Dr. Powell. Mr. Fernandez, this is a person we contract with community youth services, and they provide for us a, basically a social worker. And this also comes with a lot of hidden benefits, because we also are able to access a lot of social services through Harris County, and it also puts us in a social service network. So we're able to provide rapid services for emotional and behavioral support for our students and their families.
So we have the financial obligation, and they have no financial obligation. Is that correct?
So basically, the original contract is actually doubled the price that they offered to us at. And every year, they have been providing us with what the county calls a scholarship. So in essence, they've been giving us about a $40,000 break on this. Yes, sir. Yes, yes. And we provide office space. The person is housed on our district, and also any sort of technical services that they require.
Yeah. For how long have we had a community youth service employee?
This has been going on for a little over 10 years. And as a matter of fact, you will find them in the Justice of the Peace Courts. Each of them has one. In the city of Pasadena, our police department has a liaison. So whenever we're working with these people, this is the network that we usually go through in trying to procure services.
Yeah. Yeah, I just know that students have had trouble going from the summit back to school, so.
That is a very difficult transition, and part of what we're able to do with this person is they're able to pay them visits on the home campus and check with the family, make sure they're going to school and stuff. Usually, we put our most challenging situations or cases is who they make their case logs with.
And this employee is still vetted through Pasadena, or is it because it's a Harris County employee ultimately?
So the process, they usually, what they've done in the past, and we've only had three of these people in the whole time we've had the program, is they will come up with three case managers that have, they've vetted and have gone through the same process. They use the same background checks that we use. And then I usually sit down with a small committee, and we interview the person, and then we make the final pick. Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks for that.
You bet.
For $42,088, and for all the things that we get out of this, I would think that it is a great service for our district.
Ms. Sullivan, it's a bargain. We, through these people, we do two parenting groups that meet in the evenings. We also have access to a master's level therapist, an LPC.
Yes.
And a host of other things that we're able to do. In our Gang Violence Reduction Committee, they've been instrumental in tapping these folks into services of families that have wanted to get help. So it's a vital program.
Great network.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. It sure is, Mr. Kendrick.
Thank you.
It's been valuable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we vote on this?
Not yet.
Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion passes. Consideration and possible approval of revised ADA snapshot time for selected early college high school students in grades 11 and 12.
So moved. Second.
First, by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any comments or questions? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries, passes. Consideration possible approval of interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Education and Pasadena Independent School District for tuition education services at the Academic and Behavioral School East Campus.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any comments or questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Dr. Powell, where is the Behavioral School East Campus?
So this is right there at the corner of 610 and 225, am I remembering correctly? Okay. I've been there, but of course, I'm thinking, it used to be called ABC, and then it was ABS East, so.
ABS East.
Yeah. Years ago, it was even called ABC, wasn't it, Gloria? What was it?
ABS.
ABS, but, okay.
And I'm sorry, where did you?
I've been around a long time, 32 years, but it's right at the corner of 610 and 225, kind of where that corridor all meets up.
Oh, okay. I know now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion passes. Consideration possible approval of interlocal agreement between Harris County Department of Education and Pasadena Independent School District for music therapy.
So moved. Second.
First by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any comments or questions? Our music people have any comments? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion passes.
They're for it. They just don't supply.
I figured they would be. Sounds like a good program to me.
It is.
Consideration possible approval of contract between Pasadena ISD and Shiloh Treatment Center in the amount of $231,017.60 for tuition and educational services for special education students.
Second.
First by Ms. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan.
How many spots does this reserve for us for this amount of money?
Three spots.
Three?
That's correct.
If we have to have additional ones, can we purchase them?
Uh, yes. Looking back there. Thank you. Thank you.
You're getting the nod in the right places.
Getting the nod in the right place.
Any other questions?
Does that need to come back for a vote if we do have to purchase more spots?
So, Jody, I want to make sure we get this right.
Yes, so normally the spots with Shiloh are student-specific, and so if we were bringing that back and those spots were over the purchasing threshold, that would require board approval, we would bring that situation back. We may have to place a student there in the interim, right, but it will depend upon the student's art, but we still will bring that sort of thing back, too, for board approval.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion passes. Consideration possible approval of 23-24 Texas Education Agency 21st Century Community Learning Centers Cycle 12 Year One Grant Award.
So moved. Second.
First by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any comments or questions?
Thanks to the grants department.
No lie. You do a wonderful job. Who? Stand up, Olivia, right. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion passes. Consideration possible approval of contract between Pasadena ISD and Monarch School and Institute in the amount of $61,643 for tuition and educational services.
Second.
First by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
This is one student.
Okay. Thank you. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion passes. Consideration possible approval of seniors in the maritime program of study at the Dr. Kirk Lewis Center and Technical High School to participate in a hands-on cruise experience aboard a Carnival cruise, February 17th through 22nd, 2024.
Second.
Mr. Fernandez, motion, Ms. Sullivan, second. Any comments or questions?
So, board members, as you remember, prior to COVID, we had not only our maritime students, but even a larger group going from the Dr. Kirk Lewis Career and Technical High School, so we are starting back. So we're going to build back upon how we did in our first experiences with the cruise line. So we're excited about this opportunity for students.
We volunteer for companionship. Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. It's got to be a great experience, a great experience. Policy section, consideration and possible.
Sorry.
Wait, is that what we're approving?
Then who's going to chaperone me?
There you go.
Consideration possible adoption of TASB Localized Policy Update 120 affecting the local policies designated on the attached instruction sheet.
Second.
First by Ms. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion passes. Consideration and possible approval of adoption of TASB Localized Policy Update 121 affecting the local policies designated on the attached instruction sheet.
So moved.
First by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Davila. I'll get you right. Any discussion? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries, passes. Consideration possible approval of budget amendments for June 23.
So moved. Second.
First by Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any comments or questions? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of Salary Schedule Book for 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
First by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? You have a book in front of you if you have any questions? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. Consideration possible approval of engagement agreement for legal services with Fisher Firm.
So moved.
Second.
First by Mr. Fernandez, second by Ms. Sullivan. Any comments or questions?
I have a question. So is this open-ended?
So this would be in the transition, as we know, we're losing our general counsel. So this doesn't change the firms that we work with in different capacities and different areas, but we can always revisit this, but this would give us the opportunity, as we have a gap, to still call on Jody's services and make sure that transition is solid as we bring on our new general counsel. That's the purpose.
I guess my question is, who has the authority or the right to communicate with general counsel outside, or this council?
So currently, most contact with outside council either goes through myself, people like Kevin. Jody, of course, does the lion's share of that. You're going to have HR and finance, perhaps. It's very limited. You know, back before we had general counsel, you even had campuses and departments contacting outside council, and it was very expensive. And so there had to be a system put in place, which we did, where that would flow through associate superintendents or level of cabinet. So this would, this Fisher Firm would be general counsel and myself, but still Kevin would engage with firms that he engages with, myself, again, HR, others that Jody might mention, but this would be very limited.
So, yeah, right now, as we said, we have open-ended engagement. The board has approved the superintendent and the general counsel to assign legal work, right, to Thompson, Horton, Rogers, Morrison, Grover, and... to Thompson, Horton, Rogers, Morrison, Grover, and I believe now it's Snell, Spalding-Nichols-Lamplane Law. Those are three local school law-specific firms. Kevin, I know in a lot of our bond work goes to Roger Schmorson-Grover with Mickey Morris there. You guys know as board counsel, you use Thompson, Horton predominantly, David Hodgins or Rebecca Bailey. We use them for a lot of our standard outside situations as well. For special ed a lot, employment matters, you know, big grievances or investigations or other kinds of complaint processes that we deal with. And then we also use Spalding-Nichols-Lamplane Law for some more specific things, like we had an IRS issue with Vani years ago, and, you know, we used a person with their firm that had very specific knowledge, right, with the insurance and all of that interplay there. And so when we make assignments, we think about, you know, who's best situated to respond to that. Because even in a school law firm, you've got lawyers that specialize in specific areas. And so sometimes based on who the firm has had relationships with or different things, we make those assignments that way. And so simply, like what this type of agreement does is it gives the administration the authority to use that firm as a resource when they're selecting who to call or where to send work to. It's not anything that would in any way affect any of the other engagement agreements that you have with any other firm. Okay?
Jody, isn't it, aren't you going to the Fisher firm?
Yes, that's the firm that I'm transitioning to, yes.
Thank you.
So again, we get monthly billing from the outside firms, and we review those and look at use, patterns, and other things. I think it's important with us having this gap, just to help with the transition.
Absolutely. Good move. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion passes. Operation section, consideration and possible approval of renewal of an interlocal agreement between PISD and the Texas Department of Public Safety to continue as a commercial driver's license third-party testing site.
So move. Second.
Motion by Mr. Fernandez, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? We've been doing this for how long?
Four years.
Four years? Thank you, Robert. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of design development phase for the 2022 bond program, New Parks Elementary School Replacement Project, presentation by GPT Group. Lisa, in your group.
Thank you.
Watch your sweet.
All right. Well, good evening. On behalf of GPT Group, I just want to say thank you for having us tonight. We are excited to share with you the design development presentation for Parks Elementary School Replacement. We want to thank you guys, the board, as well as Dr. Powell and her team for giving us this opportunity. And we also want to thank our design committee, Ms. Arthur over there and the others. They have been invaluable to us as a resource in helping us to design this school. And we think we made a pretty good team with this, and we're excited to share it. So I want to introduce our team. My name is Lisa Michelle. I'm the director of GPT Group's Houston office. I have with me Jim McSherry. He's the project manager for this project. We also have Alfredo Sanchez. He's our project coordinator. And Tricia Lowe, she's our interior designer. So we are presenting the design development. We presented the schematic design process to you guys back in April. And so that was kind of the high-level design, where we came up with site plan, floor plans, the exterior building design. But now we're coming back to you tonight to show you just the development of that design. We met with the committee several times over the last couple of months, and we kind of got more down into the weeds and got more into, you know, what the spaces are going to look like, how they need to be laid out, what they need as far as casework, you know, any kind of special equipment, things like that. And so we have more tonight to show you on the interior of the building, as well as just more progress than what you saw a couple of months ago. So jumping right in, Parks Elementary School, the existing school right now, is located on the corner of St. Augustine Avenue and Jasmine Drive. It is located next to Keller Middle School. The building itself is located kind of in the center of the site, and it's got the parking to the north and to the west of it. And then on the backside of the school was, is this large play area. And that's pretty convenient for us because that's where the new school is going to go. So it gives us an opportunity, a large enough area to have that opportunity to design a school on the same site. We're going to do this in three phases. So the first phase is what you see on the left, and that is where we're going to have some selective demolition. The first being that large red area here with the number two, that is the 2001 building addition, and that's going to have to go, but that's okay because it actually was recently damaged by some hail. And so actually, if you go back to this previous slide, you see right here in this photograph, the blue tarps covering the roof. So they have already moved the students out of that wing, and so by us demolishing it, it's not going to really affect the operations of that school. We also are going to have to demolish an equipment shed, not a big deal for that. And then we are going to have to relocate the main power to the school. So moving on to phase two, we're going to be constructing the new building, like I said, in the play area behind the existing school. And fortunately for us, that leaves most of the existing school in place, and so that will remain operational, and it will also have its existing parking. And then phase three, we're, once we are finished with building the new school, we will then move to phase three, which we will do some abatement and demolish the existing school, and then we will construct the remainder of the site. So what you see here up on the screen is the, what the site plan is going to look like when everything is said and done. So we have, like I said, the school kind of located at the back of the site. And then we have all of the parking in front of it. We've added over 40 parking spots, so that will be nice for the staff and for the visitors. We also did, we also worked hard on saving these existing, you know, big gorgeous trees up front along St. Avenue, or St. Augustine Avenue. And then we also squeezed in as much detention as we possibly could in every nothing cranny on the site. You will see that we provided a large stacking lane for the parent drop-off and the drop-off at the front entry here. And then we also have a bus loop back here by the cafeteria. We've also added some secure fencing, so that's shown by this dash line here on the site plan. And we have it going along the backside of the school, and that's there because we have playgrounds on the backside. And then you also see it up here at the front because we have a play area for the kids up front. And we are designing a two-story elementary school, so just to walk you through real quick, the green area here is the front entry, and your guests will be visited by, or will be coming through a secure vestibule, and that, every guest will have to come through there in order to come and visit the school. To the right of that is, the blue area is the library, and you see this little circle area, that's the kiva. That's like the real reading area for the students, and you'll see more about that in just a little bit. To the left, there's this orange area, that's the administration area. Further to the left is the pink area, that's the music area. And then down across the hall here is another pink area, that's the science lab. And then up here in the large peach area is the gym and the cafeteria with the stage off of the cafeteria. And then kind of on the south side of the building is where all the classrooms are. So starting from the far right in the yellow, that's the special ed wing. And then next to that, we have the pre-K pod area, and then kindergarten in the middle, and then first grade all the way on the left. And on the second floor, we have second grade stacking over the pre-K area on the right. We have third grade in the middle, and then fourth grade on the far left. So looking at the exterior, it's pretty similar to what you saw when we presented schematic design. If you recall, I mentioned that we wanted to create some large volume spaces because the building is set back so far from the street. So what you see in the foreground is a large volume, two-volume space, and that's the library and the front entry. And then in the background, you see another large two-volume space, and that's the gymnasium and the cafeteria. You'll see this large overhang right over the library and the front entry, that's to kind of shade those large windows up front. And then we, you know, gave some color to the front entry so that the guests were drawn to that area. That colored area, that is a nichihua panel. It's like a cement fiber panel. And we're actually using that not only in the colored areas, but also in this brown area that you see around the school. That's to mimic kind of a wood look, but it is a cement fiber panel. And then we also have a blend of brick that goes around the base of the building. We have this canopy out front that greets the parents as they come to drop their kids off at school. And we have the name of the school above that canopy, and we also have the name of the school right here at the gym, and that's just so that you can read it from the street. So we wanted something, something large. And then moving around to the backside of the building, you'll see that, that large overhang kind of carries back to the design of the back. And so we call these overhangs the porches for the pods. And its purpose is to not only cover the door, but also to shade the glass that we do have on the south-facing elevation. And that's really the only place that you'll see windows on the south side of the building, and we did that to reduce the solar heat gain. But every classroom will have a window, and those will be on the east and west basades. And you'll see the windows there that will be covered with aluminum sunshade to help with that as well. And then we have the playground areas between the pods, and you can see a courtyard here in the middle. You'll see a shape of the United States of America, and Jim will kind of explain a little bit of how that connects to the theme of the building. And then you'll also see some planters for, use for the science classrooms. And with that, I'm going to hand it off to Jim. He's going to talk a little bit more about the interior of the building.
So the theme of our building is national parks, and that was developed with Dr. Candice Arthur and the rest of the team. They've been awesome for this whole process. I've never had more fun on a building committee. They, and so with, with the national parks, we decided that, we sent out a survey, and they picked the most popular national parks on their survey, the ones they wanted to use. And we assigned those to each of the spaces. So you can see the cafeteria is Big Ben. The pods are different national parks in each area, and those, we'll, we'll use that as inspiration to develop the theme for the, for the campus. The goal is to not like necessarily make those like literal translations, but, you know, something that's still going to be timeless and, you know, in 10 years isn't going to look really dated or anything. The, and these parks represent the entire US, including Alaska and Hawaii. And then the second floor, the, the second, third, and fourth grade classrooms have their own pod as well. The, getting more into the details of the individual spaces, you've got our administration build, the administration wing. We worked with the committee to develop these spaces, but I want to talk a little bit about security here. We've got a double vestibule here, so you've got a secure vestibule with a, with a transaction window here. And that way, and this, this door is locked down. And then they, once they get approved through the Raptor system, then they can come in here, and then they're still locked. They still can't get into the building until they go in and check in. If you're a parent and your kid is sick and you come to pick up your kid, we have, the clinic is connected directly to the reception area. So you never have to get into the building to pick up your child. Same thing with the conference rooms, where the conference room is right off the reception area. And we'll have key card access for these doors to, again, just to keep this as contained and secure as possible. The, this is the entrance lobby when you walk in. This is the first entrance to the pod. This Tortuga National Park is the, this is the entry to the pre-K pod. This signage here is made from reclaimed wood from the stage, from the old parks. And we're, there's a few elements that we're going to be, you know, taking from there to, to make, make the transition to the new school. There are some letters on the existing building, the old, the dedication plaque and things like that that we're going to bring over. This is, this also shows the stairway up to the second floor here, and this is a little learning, it's not really a learning stair, I guess it's just the learning steps, but, because it's smaller. But the, and then the, these are pathways, so the kids know which way in the floor to get to the, how they go to the grade levels in the classrooms. So this is the library here, and you can see this is the, this is the kiva. So this is the big sphere that you see outside, and this is, this is going to be a multimedia area. We'll have projectors in there, so we'll be able to do videos in there and also do, you know, storytelling. And again, you'll have views of the entire space here. The shelving, we will be able to fit about 18,000 volumes in there. We have areas for like fixed, like fixed instruction, more structured instruction, and areas over like where you can do like more of a story hour type thing, computers over here. They even have a book vending machine. There's little nooks that the kids can sit inside in between the books, so they can kind of sit quietly and read and just have a space to themselves. Office areas, storage areas. And this is the rendering of the library. You can see this is the learning sphere here. This, the theme for this one is Hawaii Volcanoes National Park. And so we wanted to evoke this kind of lava pattern in the floor with the, with the floor finishes. And then we have a lot, since, again, since the theme of the building is national parks, we're using a lot of natural materials like stone and wood to, to, you know, make it very homey and comfortable and a safe space for the kids. This is a typical classroom pod. This is the pre-K pod. But you can see that we've, it's, it's six classrooms, and the, and they're connected. Each one's connected to a group shared restroom with a vestibule for the sink and washing. And there's clear glass here so they can, the teacher can monitor this even when the kids are washing their hands. And then this is the, this is the flex space for the, and then there's a huddle room, which is like a small conference room that they can do one-on-one teaching, or they can do little small group meetings or something, things like that. This area is, you know, they can get multiple classes out here. It's big enough to serve as a multipurpose area. And if you look at the rendering here, so this one is, since this is Tortuga National Park, we, and that's an island, that's, that's island off the coast of Florida. The, we wanted to get this feeling of being underwater, and so we've got these bubble ceiling things in here. This, this is the huddle room here, and so the, this translucent glass wall here is also going to serve as a projector screen. So if they want to get kids sitting out here to watch movies or something like that, they can do that. And again, security, each one of these pods has got a set of double doors at the end of them, so they can be, they'll, they'll be on hold open, so they can be locked down in an emergency. And then this is a typical classroom, and again, this is, this is the window out to the flex area, but this tack board actually is on a sliding track. And so if they ever have a situation where they need to lock down the campus, they can move that door over the window to, for safety and security. This is our cafeteria, and one of the things that the committee wanted to do is they wanted to have the stage on the cafeteria side instead of on the gym side. And so that's, that's why it tends to look more like an auditorium than a cafeteria, but it, it, it serves its function both ways. This is the stage opening here. We've got lots of natural light on clear stories, and the acoustical panels are evoking the, because the theme is Big Ben. So we're evoking the striations in the, in the rocks out there. And you can see this is, and the gymnasium is right next to it. We're connecting those with an operable wall panel. That'll be, that way they can get more space in here. And again, more natural light into the, into the gym area. And these little dots on here, they're all spaced like six feet apart. And so what they, they'll use them for is they can tell the kids to like line up on the green line, and they'll line up on the green lines, they can do like calisthenics or exercises and things like that. They also have their office and a storage room. The office has a nice view to the entire gymnasium. This is a rendering of the cafeteria, and so you can see this, this is an acoustical deck with exposed structure. These are the acoustical panels. This is the entry to the kitchen, serving lines. This is the bus drop-off area as well. And we've got, again, paths in the floor pattern to like let the kids know where they need to stand to go around and get in line for, to get their lunches. And I turn it back over to Lisa now to talk about schedule and some other things.
All right. So our construction budget is $33,625,000, and that's going to include the new building and all the systems that go in it, as well about, as well as all the site elements, like the sidewalks and the parking and the detention. It's also going to include the abatement and the demolition of the existing building, and that's will also include the base construction. So looking at the schedule, here we are in July, presenting DD to the board.
So looking at the schedule, here we are in July, presenting DD to the board. Upon your approval, we will begin construct, the construction document phase of the project. And then the plan is to issue for permit and bids in November and have the board award the contract to the contractor in January. After that is done, then the contractor can begin early procurement of some of those long lead items that we're having issues with in construction today. And then once that happens, the contractor can start on, on the site in March and then start the construction. And so we anticipate the new building to be complete in July of 2025. And at that time, the staff can move into that building. And then we can go ahead with the abatement and demolition of the existing building and then continue with the site work and have everything complete by January of 2026. And with that, we want to show you a very quick animation of the exterior and interior of the building. And I just want to say thank you again for having us.
So you can see the site fencing around here. You can see how the, as you come around, you can see the, the wood and the brick and the porches here, the playgrounds here, and the entrances defined by the NCHI. There's the U.S. thing, that's the national parks thing. Each, each, that, that map's going to have the locations of all the parks that are inside the building to, as an educational tool.
You can see that sphere, that's the kiva out front.
Is there a pickleball court?
That'd be fun.
Inside, sorry.
And again, that's the library. This is when you come in the front entry. This is the entrance into the P, pre-K pod. This is the flex area. This is a typical classroom. And this is the cafeteria. Any questions?
Do.
I must say, I'm quite impressed that you're utilizing national parks. I think it's absolutely fantastic. And whoever came up with the idea with the school named Parks deserves a pat on the back. It's absolutely wonderful.
It's been a fun theme for sure.
Beautiful facility.
Quite impressive.
Beautiful.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to do anything on that? Yeah, we do. Now, do I have a motion or?
So move.
Motion, Ms. Sullivan, second by who? Kenny or Ms. Doliva?
Yeah.
Okay, got you. Any comments or questions except what we've already said? It's gorgeous. Very creative. I liked it underwater one. Beautiful. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible, purely design development phase for the 2022 Bond program New Bailey Elementary School replacement projects, P K, PBK. Good to see you all tonight.
Good evening. My name is Ron Bailey, partner with PBK. With me, Jorge Tiscorano, Nicole Jordan, and Melissa Capel. We're the, the pasting ISD team from PBK. We're going to show you design development this evening for the new Bailey Elementary School. If you recall, back in March, we came, presented schematic design. Since that time, we've been working with the design committee, with the principal, and several other folks there to develop further from schematic design. And then again, we're here to update you. So Jorge, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. So let me see, because I think I got to do this way. Yeah, like Ron was mentioning, so what's the, a couple of months ago, we presented SD. So we went through pretty much the site plan, the floor plans, some of the exterior, especially from the front. And then the, I think the, the, the area that we showed on the interior were the pods just because we were kind of building on the other schools that you had recently done, but also kind of, kind of building on top of those. So today, very similar to, to the one from GDP as well, we're going to be showing some of the additional refinements, but especially a lot of additional interiors development as well. So just to start really quickly, let me actually go maybe from here. I can, can it, can you see it? A little bit, yes, there you go. So we're right in front, actually, of Strawberry Park. This is Park Side, and then we have Lafferty on this side. The area that you guys see in dash, that's where the existing Bailey Elementary is at. So similar to the previous elementary as well, thankfully, we have this additional area of the playground or the existing playground. So that's where we're going to build the new Bailey replacement. So it's going to actually fit in here. Similar to the previous one too, we're trying to find as many areas for detention. So you can see it here and here. And likely, like the other one as well, we tried to develop as much of a parent drop-off because as a lot of people know, especially on Bailey, the, the parent drop-off right now actually extends all the way actually to Strawberry Lane from, actually from here. So we tried to actually add as much additional drop-off for the parent drop-off in, in this lane and then add additional parking. So we have 25 spots for the visitors and then 100 parking spots for the administrations and faculty on the back. Same thing from Lafferty, we actually can come back in. There's probably a little bit less park, buses than in park, but we also have a bus drop-off lane here that actually feeds into the dining and the gymnasium area on this side. We actually have a connector from the parking back here to, to actually to the school on this side. So they actually, they don't have to, the teachers don't have to interrupt whatever's happening in the gym and in the dining commons. And then the central park and kind of delivery for the cafeteria kind of back here on this side. And then once that happens and we can remove the existing elementary, and then in this area that you see there, kind of the green area, that'll become the playground, the play fields, and then the, and then the playgrounds as well. And then we also have a hardtop on that location. So showing you a little bit of the exterior that we had shown before is actually very similar the way we showed last time. Just a couple of the comments from, from the committee and as well from the superintendent and the administrators. We ended up with just a little bit of more color on the, on the front. So similar to the other one, we actually have the library right at the front here, the main entrance indicating by this point. And then you can actually start seeing on the back, a little bit of the, of the pods that we have similar to Park as well. This is actually two levels as well on the, on the educational, the classroom side. And then this little area back there, that's actually the administration. So a little closer so that you can see the main entry at that point. So the idea, so to bring the library toward the front is also since we have Strawberry Park right in front of us, we can get all the daylight and all the views toward, toward Strawberry apart from, from Bailey Elementary since they're so intricately tied together. As well, we also have a, a nice canopy for the drop-off lane. So the kiddos can actually kind of load and unload very quickly from this point and then go into the school. And then a little bit quickly on the floor plan, that again, didn't change that much from last time. I just wanted to kind of quickly show everybody kind of a lay of the land in here. So the main entrance in this point, the area on this side is the main administration. The blue here on this side is the library. So pretty much we have kind of the noisy public side on this point. So library, administration, back there, you kind of see the dining commons, the kitchen, central plant, the gymnasium, similar to the previous schools. They're actually going to be tied together. In this case, the stage is on the gymnasium side. We also have an interior courtyard that is actually feeding a lot of beautiful, also daylight into the cafeteria. And then so as soon as people walk in, you're actually going to be greeted by kind of a lot of abundant natural daylight inside of our, of our school. So this area can also become something of an educational learning courtyard, but it would be extremely secure because it is completely an interior courtyard. Then on the other side of it, so this area, kind of that core is some additional mechanical, but the main point, the main area here, we have the music area. And then the one on the bottom is all the special ed. And then if you notice the three pods, similar to the previous one and similar to the kind of previous two elementaries that you had built, we have a kind of a pod scenario with a flex space in the middle with six classrooms around it. So this is going to be pre-K, Kinder, and then first. And then on the second level, we'll have second level, third and fourth grades and some additional support spaces on the, on the second, and then science on the second level in this case. So like we were mentioning, as soon as you walk in from the secure entry vestibule, you're actually going to be greeted from this internal courtyard. In this case, we actually have kind of very, kind of good circulation. So this one will take you to the dining and the gymnasium on this point. And then this one actually can take you back to the academic wing. So you can kind of see the core and then the second level on that part. But then here, you're actually greeted by that internal, internal courtyard. We're still updating a couple of things, adding some additional flooring changes and then adding some additional graphics as well. And then this one is that central courtyard. So I mean, I'm going to jump ahead because Nicole is going to talk a little bit more of this, but they are, since this is an existing school, they are the honeybees. So similar to the previous in Park, the, the committee selected actually wildflowers of Texas. So it goes into pollination, bees, so it's all tied together. So the central, kind of that learning courtyard that we're looking at, so we kind of have the hexagons, it's kind of going to be a motif that you, you'll see kind of repeated. And then those shade canopies kind of have butterflies, but also bees as well. So again, it's all kind of being tied with the, with the overall concept. And then the same scenario, not only do we have a little bit of areas to play, but some areas that actually can also turn into kind of an open door classroom. And then the other thing as well, although you see green over there, this is actually synthetic turf. So we won't have any, any kind of, kind of things being planted or grass, except for those things, actually, let me come back. We will have an area for some small planters that are actually going to depict the six or seven flowers that are going to be spread out through the rest of the pods. So again, tying the concept even also on the outside. Then the library on the front, like we were mentioning, so very similar to the other one, we have the additional support spaces, daylight and opening toward the front. People are actually going to be coming in through here. And then a lot of actually windows that open into the courtyard. Similar to the other one, we have the general area for all our books and bookshelves, circulation desk. But then we also have a two defined kind of teaching areas, the kiva on this point. And you'll see a different variation on this, on the kiva for this school. And then the open kind of learning classroom here on this side. So just to show you, so again, going back to the honeybee, so the, the pods are going to be the wildflowers with the, with the distinct colors. But then the library is the one that actually has kind of all of it to combine. So we'll actually work with a graphic eventually. These are just placeholders, but the graphics in our graphic department will actually again end up coming in a little bit later on, working with the district, working with the, with the school to actually have customized graphics that will tie all together. But then you start to see kind of the whole idea of the honeybee. So we have actually honeys going around. Like I mentioned before, we have the hexagon, kind of a pattern on the floor. And then that kiva that I was mentioning, right? So this is circulation desk, open teaching area, but then the kiva is going to be kind of that honey hive right in there. So this is the other point, looking at the library, kind of a broken, interesting ceiling. Again, the same, the same thing kind of here, defining the circulation and that open learning court, learning area. But then that kind of hive that it will indicate that kind of kiva for the, for the school. And this is another one looking into. We wanted to also kind of depict the hive, but as well have it be somewhat translucent because we want to see what's happening. Librarians, as always, want to make sure that it's safe and secure and you can see not only into the space, actually see beyond it because there's some additional kind of space of the library. And as well, we can actually get to see all the way into the, into the Strawberry Park on the other side. And then lastly, on my part, it's actually, this is that kind of support space that I was mentioning in the middle. This is that additional flooring that will actually have all the colors. It'll be LVT and then we'll actually have all the, excuse me, it's marmolium. And then we'll have all the colors around it. And then the graphic, again, this is a placeholder, but then the idea is that since this is special ed, we actually wanted to have all the colors, kind of a mosaic of all the colors come in and be represented in the special ed wing. Then Nicole is going to take the other part.
So here we have a typical pod layout, as Jorge said. It's a main flex area flanked by six classrooms and support spaces for teachers as well as restrooms for students. Okay. And as Jorge was mentioning, we have the Texas Wildflower theme. And with that, working with the design committee, these six flowers were selected and we had coordinating colors per pod. So each pod is designated by a color and then the library representing that learning hive environment and back to the relation of the Bailey Bees and how the bees pollinate the flowers and kind of, you know, teach, teaches students as they kind of go through each of the grades and have a different experience. So in looking at the six pods here, you can see the top three pods are on the first floor. And then you can see a bit of clear story pop up on the second floor for second, third, and fourth grade. We wanted to keep all the amenities very equitable. So you can see hexagon cutouts where children can sit as well as look-throughs for storage and security, the playfulness of the LVT colored pattern, and then kind of bringing this macro sensory experience. So you'll see all of the flowers for each of the pods in this kind of macro graphic. And then a lot of different touch and feel wall coverings and felt for display and to have different sort of sensory interactions as you learn about the pod that you're in throughout the year. Moving on and leading into that sensory environment that we're focusing on for Bailey Elementary, we have the science wing. And so during the design committee meeting, there was discussion about how to make this space exciting and experiential. So we brought the idea of the solar system as one of the ideas that came to the table and bringing that on a three-dimensional part. So we have the dark, the dark laying ceiling. And then we have these 3D orbs that will have rings of light showing their orbital rings to teach all the students of Bailey about their solar system. And we've cut away the edges of the ceilings so they can look up and see the fire sprinklers, the structure and the ducts and kind of learn what goes into a building. We also have a cutaway on the left to kind of show, you know, what goes inside a wall and kind of be able to engage that exploratory excitement and use that as a learning tool for all the different grades. With that, we move to our gym area. We're bringing in the colors of the pods with all the different hexagons for acoustical sound treatment and kind of hinting at the hexagons of bees and also connecting back to the pods, using Bailey's colors of the blue to have a layout area for circulation and to define the court space. And then similar to the other project, we have an operable partition that brings us to the dining area. And in looking at the dining area, we bring back the colorful planks and bring the hexagons around. And the blue border indicates a circulation area for queuing for the servery and also a area where we can have some fun graphics for Bailey to work with the whole team as we develop that further into the project. Nice natural daylight out to the outside. And then kind of looking into the servery line and connecting the playful tiles and kind of the colored planks we've used on the floor and the glass, bringing that back into the serving areas that you see throughout the school. And with that, I'll leave it for Melissa.
All right. So for schedule, of course, we're here today for the board approval of our design development package. Upon approval of our DD package, we'll immediately jump into CDs, which will take us through May of 2024, including permitting. After that, we'll be, begin bidding in the summer and then we'll start construction summer of 2024 and finish around March of 2026. And then for budget, our budget is $33,625,000. Over the past couple of months, we've been working on further refining our plan and making our plan really efficient. So far, we're at 103,000 square feet, which is very efficient for our plan. And that puts us at about $324 per square feet. And lastly, we have a animation to show you.
What's that? We'll answer any questions you may have.
Beautiful. How you going to get the kids to go home? They're going to have so many colors and things to look at.
Who's on the design team from Bailey?
So Karen and...
So Karen is out of town, the principal, so I'm not sure if anyone from her team is here or not. I don't believe so. She's on vacation still. She'll be back Monday.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question. The exterior outside, it looks like the large pots have the various flowers in. Are you anticipating putting fresh flowers in there or some type of artificial or what's the consensus?
So our, our idea is to plant the flowers for each of the pods and have them be alive and have the little bit of life, because it's kind of hard to have a school about flowers with no true flowers in there. So just a little bit of flowers and we'll have a spigot on the side, so it'll be easy to maintain and perhaps the grades might take ownership of each of their hexagons to care for that plant.
Be kind of a learning experience, you know, for the kids to plant the seeds and watch the flowers grow.
So the students will be able to plant?
That's right.
And watch it and take care of it? You have a lot of...
I guess my question is, was there as much engagement as I see with parks as there is with Bailey?
There were about 18 or so folks on the committee and they were very involved. And, uh, as we presented the options, we also showed various ideas for them to pick from and, and add, I'll just, yes, there was, there was quite a bit of involvement.
Yeah, and anything you saw in regards to the concept of the flowers, the bees, uh, the library, that's actually, that's all them. Right? We as architects are facilitators and trying to facilitate and grab all the ideas, but all of their ideas are actually their ideas.
So when I met with PBK, they asked, have they always been the bees? And I said, that's a good question. And Karen was on vacation, and so I called my husband, who's 54 years old, we'll put that on the record, and I said, honey, when you went to Bailey, what were the mascot? And immediately he said, we were the bees.
So you said honey, so did you?
I don't see what's going on here.
I tipped him off.
And I, I didn't even remember when I was there, if we were the, the honeybees. And, uh, but from what I've heard, apparently we were.
Long time.
Yeah.
It's, the colors are radiant. I mean, the blue is outstanding.
What I love about all the new schools, from all you architects, is the light and the precision of the colors and, and the themes. Really creative and beautiful. Beautiful buildings. Any other questions?
No, just one comment. Um, I usually go jogging at Strawberry Park, so I'm gonna be really excited to see that in the morning or in the evening. And, uh, I do have a niece and a nephew that attend, uh, Bailey Elementary. And I was telling my niece, maybe one day theoretically if I have kids, they'll be attending Bailey Elementary as well. So I'm excited about this and them learning about plants and nature that way.
Great.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Just a lot of people are interested and ready to see this thing take off and, and finish up. I, uh, I know y'all have a, a great task in front of you and, uh, you're putting your best foot forward because this is just right, this is the first one that y'all are...
It is. It is. It is.
We look forward to that.
And do you know that it's, it's actually his namesake, right?
Yeah, yeah.
He's his grandfather.
Oh, that's right. That's right. Yes, that's right.
And I was able, so we have triple pressure.
Yes. With you guys, with the community, but then we also have to, to him and his mom and...
So I was at a conference and I ran into the son of the first principal of the school. So he's, he's interested, he's one of the guys that wants to see the opening and, and he wants me to keep him updated, so.
I always knew him by Mr. Van Sickle. I had no idea what his first name is.
Yeah.
Yeah. I do remember, that's right. And I was able to, uh, just kind of was coincidence, was able to show, uh, my mother, who's still alive, and, and my sister, the presentation. And, uh, and they, they, they value that connection, that it's, it's a namesake building and we're very excited about how it's coming out.
Really cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. I guess, I need a motion.
So move.
All right.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any comments or questions? I think we've had a bunch of those. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of construction contract with Halus Construction Inc. for the 2022 Bond Program Auxiliary Stadium Track Replacement Project in the amount of
So move.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Fernandez, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion pass. Consideration possible approval of professional service agreement to CMT Technical Services for Material Testing Services on the 2022 Bond Program Auxiliary Stadium Track Replacement Project in the amount of $12,419.
So move.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of construction contract for extra-light LED lighting solutions for the 2022 Bond Parking Light Lighting Upgrades LED Package, One Project, in the amount of $675,742.
So move. Second.
Motion for Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any comments or questions?
It will be wonderful to have lighting in these facilities.
It's gonna be beautiful.
Nice upgrade.
So I, well, I guess I kind of have a, a side question. Uh, as far as the parking lots themselves, are they in good shape?
Kevin, he's asking about the shape of the parking lots. I think they all vary as far as their age that they were replaced.
They do vary, yes. Okay, so are they, are they gonna have to break up any concrete or anything going through this?
No. We're working with the existing pole bases most of the time.
I'm sorry, I can't...
You wanted to come to the mic. They're working with the existing pole bases, so it's actually the lighting fixtures that are being changed out from that's traditional to the LED?
Correct. Yeah, most of the pole bases are in good enough shape. We've had a structural engineer review them, so we'll be able to utilize those. So some, there are going to be a few that will have to replace the concrete bases, but we're trying to utilize what we have.
So Kevin, I noticed that Pasadena High School is one of them on here. Is this going to take care of all of the exterior lighting?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 77, for new Thompson Intermediate School Replacement Project in the credit amount of $8,600.
So move.
Motion for Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Comments or questions? We're always glad to get money back.
I understand from the community that this is going to be a trophy school. They're so excited.
I bet.
We're very excited as well.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion pass. Consideration possible approval of house expenditure authorization, AEA number 012, for the Guidance Center Conversion to Nutrition Services Project in the amount of $43,987.33.
So move.
Second.
Motion for Ms. Sullivan, second by Mr. Fernandez. Any comments or questions? It'll be a good conversion, a good use of that building. All in favor, say aye.
We know when we'll be able to have occupancy there.
Occupancy projected for September 29th, and they're on schedule.
Oh, okay. November?
September.
September, I'm sorry. Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 014, for the Guidance Center Conversion of Nutrition Services Project in the amount of $39,538.80.
So move. Second.
Motion for Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any comments or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of change order number 003 for a new administration building replacement project in the amount of $300,000.
So move. Second.
Motion for Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any comments or questions?
We'll have a party if we ever get in this building.
We'll have a board meeting, that's for sure.
Oh, that's a party or not. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval allowance expenditure authorization, AEA, AEA, excuse me, number 119, for the new administration building replacement project in the amount of $127,382.
So move. Second.
Motion for Ms. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Public comments according to BED Local, related products not listed on the agenda. Is Yan here?
Yes.
Okay, Yan. You got three minutes. Mr. Fernandez will give you two minutes and then tell you you got a minute left.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, superintendent, and school community members. My name is Yan Ra Bay. I'm an educator and community member. I would like to talk, to thank the principal of Dobie High School for taking time to speak to me and a student about Mega Lunch today. I was compelled to find out more about why Mega Lunch was being taken away when so many students and teachers benefited from it. Also, I wanted to share with him about my experience when my school did away with lunchtime, similar to Mega Lunch. It was my first year at my new high school. It was also the principal's first year. We had a one-hour lunch where students had adequate time to eat, rest, go to tutorials, and club meetings. Enrollment was high. The culture was a very positive one. Towards the end of the first semester, there was a fight in the cafeteria and the new principal decided to put an end to the one-hour lunch. Students had less time to eat lunch and take a break, which is an important aspect for social and mental health. Students did not have an, did have an advocacy period of 45 minutes to go to tutorials and club meetings, but it was not the same. The culture had changed. Later, student enrollment was down, resulting in budget cuts. Perhaps it was not causation, but correlation. But student and teacher see that one-hour lunch was beneficial. Why take away such an innovative concept? The principal said that the lowest performing kids were making, were not making the right decisions. I need to make a systematic approach. I understand that, but then the brightest kids got penalized. For the students who needed extra support, federal, federal House Bill 4545 allocated SRF funding of 30 hours per student who did not pass their start test. Did the principal hire interventionists to help low-performing students to help them fill in their learning gaps? The SRF funds were set up to hire additional personnel to help these students that were failing or were behind. Since 2021, there has been SRF fund, which means it's been for, it was two years of intervention to help low-performing students after school, on Saturdays and holidays, as well as after school. Did PISD tutors have adequate time to make sure that students were caught up? How many hours of intervention were given? Another issue about the change in lunch schedule was the decision-making process. The principal said there was a committee to review Mega Lunch. The principal visited other schools in the district, but when it came down to making the decision, did teachers and staff and parents have opportunity to give input? It did not seem clear that that was the case. Such an important decision for the well-being of our students deserved more input from the school committee. In my subdivision, there's a new charter college prep school being built, as well as others in the district. Students have choices to attend other schools. That should be taken into consideration when making decisions that affect our best and brightest students. Thank you.
This is the first year that we'll be going away from Mega Lunch. As you know, we've tried it for several years and there's been cost prohibitive choices. Pardon? I can. I can, the board can't. That's right, Rebecca?
Right.
I can, the board can't. That was just confirmed. So I was just letting the audience know that this is the first year we'll go away from it, but thank you for sharing us about Chavez. Uh, but as far as Dobie, about 30% of the kids were taking advantage of the time and about 70% were not. So what we've done is we've turned it into an intervention period of 28 minutes and a lunch period of 30 minutes. So students are still gonna get the opportunities for intervention and have the opportunities for enrichment during that time. But again, we want to make sure 100% of kids are benefiting from that time and staff. So we are going to try something different. We have site-based decision-making in Pasadena ISD and we'll review that data once we have a full year of implementation and review that and see if it's best for students and staff. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next hour of business is to set next regular meeting for Tuesday, August 22nd. Your motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Fernandez, second by Mrs. Sullivan. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Consideration possible approval of Ailey FISD trustee Dr. Darlene Bro to be nominated for the Tasby Region Four Position B on the Tasby Board of Directors.
So move. Second.
Motion for Mrs. Sullivan, second by Ms. Davila. Any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. No other business before this board. Thank you for being here. We are adjourned.